I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Belsley.
Here.
Dobbs.
Here.
Hare.
Here.
Herman. Kaufman.
Here.
Newhouse.
Here.
Rainson.
Here.
Can we do the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin tonight with a little public hearing on our annual appropriations ordinance. The appropriations have been on display since July the 5th, I think, didn't you tell me? And I'd like to call on the administrator to, she's made a few changes to the one that you've seen on, on display, and then we can get some comment from the audience.
The, many of the changes have to do with how we are showing property taxes and replacement taxes on our financial statements, that comes from just an auditor request. So, in the police department, we had a change that basically decreased one expense and then increased another by the same amount, so it's a net zero expense. And then, the major changes are, we increased, inter fund transfers out from $4,864 to $5,920. This includes changes in how property and replacement taxes are shown on the financials, and the Cortland Road improvement, because that has increased. The next item that would increase would be, in tourism, the building increased from 0 to 98, and that is due to expenses that were approved in fiscal year 13, but because the expenses are just coming through and those bills are coming due, we have to put it in this year, so that we're actually appropriating the money in which we're spending it. We had the motor fuel tax fund, we have one outstanding bill, it's actually from fiscal year 11, for the East Jefferson Capital Project, it has not yet been billed by IDOT, so I put that in here, so that's covered whenever that bill eventually comes through. And we have a $6,000 contribution that we make to the Tri-County Regional, which we approved a couple of weeks ago, so that makes that legal. And then, Capital Projects Fund increased from $5.785 million to $6.811 million, and that is the Cortland Road improvements. That's getting them all under one contract in fiscal year 14. We were going to space those out over two years, but it'll probably be a bigger savings for us if we do it all in this year. Those are our major changes throughout this.
Would anyone like to make comments or ask questions about these appropriations? You do understand that even though we will approve the appropriations, each of these expenses will have to be approved again before they're actually made. There being no questions or comments, I'll move on to special reports. I don't believe there are any special reports tonight. There being none, let's move to public comments. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Bob? You'll have to identify yourself, even though we know exactly who you are.
Bob Bright, 137 West Chicago Street, Morton. Two issues tonight. Been a thorn in my side for the last several years. The Pumpkin Festival and the Chamber of Commerce. They think they're above the law. Last year, in 2012, they actually sought and received permission to close some streets. The year before, they felt they didn't have to. The only reason they did it last year is I threatened to shut them down. This year, they have yet to seek permission for the festival. If they don't make their request and get it approved, I'll shut them down this year. But, my main concern there is, they're closing off Jefferson, rerouting the parade, parking is, you know, isn't a premium. So, when you close off Jefferson, you have to close off Third Street, Madison, First Street, for the parade. And people are scurrying to find a place to park. Those that live close by, they're paying a price, because sometimes they're blocking driveways. It's a bad situation. They keep taking parking away. Now, as far as the liability is concerned, when they have that carnival where they have it, with that great number of people, maybe you're not ready to do it this year, but next year, get the carnival somewhere else, you've got a tremendous liability there if something happens. And the chamber doesn't have the wherewithal insurance-wise, probably the operator doesn't have the insurance if, for a bad accident there. So, the EDC, it's become a farce, these tax abatements, American Tire, Monsanto, Morton Auto Auction, Bradley Services. When you, commercial buyer enters into a contract, he has a 180-day due diligence period to check out everything. So, when you run into soil conditions, which is, I suspect, is not true, they come to the village, you're supposed to go back to the seller and negotiate a better price. The village is looking, okay, we'll help them out, they're going to move here regardless. All I saw that happened is they took the black topsoil that was good, moved it down to the end of Erie Street by Birchwood. Bradley was not going to leave town, Farmer Fleet was not going to leave town. Why are you making them entitled to all this? And if you set up this metrics, or matrix, these two guys, that guy and that guy should not be able to vote here, because that's a conflict of interest, because they're on the EDC council. The board itself is abdicating its responsibility if they come up with this, I don't know if it's metrics or matrix, this formula, that makes it an entitlement. Okay, they fudged the figures, two years later, they haven't met what they said they were going to do. Are you going to penalize them, pull their tax abatement? You guys are going down the wrong road, as far as tax abatement. Those people that want to do business here will come here. You're just making the EDC meet its goals. That's a farce. Thanks for hearing me out.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else?
Good evening, Bill Engold, 1208 Lee, and owner of Red Rock Bar and Grill in Morton here. I'm here tonight to just try and get the board to relook at the Video Gaming Act. A few years back, the board opted out, which was an option that the state gave communities and counties the opportunity to do, prior to the law even being finalized. And, we as business owners were told at the time that the reason for this, the main reason was obviously the law hadn't been established yet, and the control issue for video gaming was unseen. We really didn't know what the law was going to be finalized as. But since last August, actually, the law has been implemented, of the communities and counties that were opted out in August of last year, over 250 have opted back in to this law. The proceeds of this go into the state's Capital Works Fund, which, I'm assuming Morton does receive Capital Works money, and I'm not sure as to how long that will be allowed to go on without the village being involved in the Gaming Act. But, getting back to the original law, when the games were allowed before, they weren't really police, they were called gray games by the state. And now with the law, everything is done through the computer system of the state. The old games are not allowed in the state, not even in a garage or storage, and many businesses had revenues from these that we don't have anymore. One foot outside of Morton, it's allowed. It's allowed in Tazewell County, East Peoria, Groveland, Mackinac, Pekin, Deer Creek, Tremont, Washington, everywhere. And we are at an unbelievable disadvantage. You can go right online, the state has a website which tells exactly what each community, county, establishment is doing in revenues, and it's right there, it's right online. My wife and I, we're fourth-generation Mortonites, we brought our business back here in 2003. We love Morton, we live in Morton, but we need to be competitive. And, we do a lot for the community with the gym, from renting out, or not renting out, but using the gym for teams to practice, fundraising opportunities, things like that, that we want to keep being able to do. And I'm not sure, it's going to be a hard decision for us, just like for you, to either vote yes or no on this, for us to actually be able to stay in Morton. Not only just from the revenue standpoint of being able to continue with our business being competitive, and being able to do updating and work to our, most of this money would go into the upkeep of our business, and not only what the value of our business down the road will be. So, we would just like to see the board at least bring this to a topic in one way or another, at some point soon, at least tell us whether this is going to go or not. And I know there'll be opposition to it. And opposition, you know, it's going to be opposition to everything, but in the same sense, people who are against this don't have to solicit establishments that have this. That's the freedom. You know, you've got fraternal organizations, the VFW and American Legion, which had those games in the past, and they, you know, they went and fought for our freedoms. And I just think they should have as much opportunity to have those freedoms as any of us. And it's a choice for them. And I know it'll be a hard decision, but at least give us a yes or no. That's, that's what I'm here to ask for. So, thank you.
Bill, we, I don't want to put the board on the spot to try to answer this and debate it right now.
Of course.
But what I will do is ask for consensus of whether or not the trustees think this should be on the next regular board meeting agenda. Can I get some kind of a show of hands whether they think that's a good idea?
I think it's a good idea.
You believe it should be?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Well, it's fair, if, if it's a question of a citizen bringing an issue to the board for consideration, then we have to take the response.
Well, I mean, there's a timing issue, and I'm just, I'd like to put it on the next agenda if that's all right.
I am perfectly willing to have it on the next agenda.
You guys are comfortable with that? All right, it'll be on the next regular board meeting agenda.
Thank you.
We have a consent agenda tonight. It has approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting, approval of the bills, ordinances, we don't have any ordinances tonight, but we do have a resolution. The resolution is to release executive session minutes. And in other business, we have approval of the Walton Avenue Platte. Would anybody like to see any of that pulled from the consent agenda? Bob?
Your Honor, Roman numeral seven, D1.
Seven.
We'll discuss that later, I'd like to.
D.
It's Resolution 413, the Resolution regarding release of executive session minutes. Roman numeral seven, D is the delta, one.
Was that the only one? I missed some of what you said. You want to pull D1 out of the consent agenda?
Please.
Okay. Anything else?
Item E, Your Honor, approval of Walton Avenue Platte, is, it's simply the approval of the Platte, but it's, really in the consent agenda, it comes ahead of the approval of the contract.
I agree.
So, just as a, as a sort of a good housekeeping and good management matter, perhaps we could pull that and consider that subsequent to other action on, on.
Good idea. Anything else? Let's call the roll and vote for the remaining part of the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, could I have a motion?
Sam?
I'll second.
Tom, seconds.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Well, let's consider those items. We've been asked to reconsider the resolution regarding the release of executive session minutes. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Because I'm not sure what the objection is, what I'm hearing is that there's some opposition to releasing the minutes, usually the other way around, people want the executive.
I can't believe you meant that.
So, so, I, you know, I guess I'm waiting to hear from, from the applicant on what we'd like done with that.
You don't want us, you want us to release the minutes, don't you, Bob?
Well, I'd like to know what it's all about. If you're going to release them, great, but it doesn't tell me that you're releasing them, except regarding your release.
Well, if we'd have voted it on the consent agenda, they would have been released.
Well, thanks for the clarification.
I'm sorry. Okay. I guess we'll. Well, I think over a period of time, they're automatically released, when they're judged to no longer be, the need to keep them secret. Could we have a motion to approve D1? So much. Randy?
Saxton, Newhouse.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Now, on the Platte, I think you meant to sort of table it until we get to it later in the meeting.
Correct, yes.
Okay. I have a few items myself. I'd like to make a few appointments. On the Business District Development and Redevelopment Commission, I conferred with trustees Newhouse and Herman, and I would like to reappoint Mary Spar. She's a downtown business owner and operator, and has very extensive knowledge of historical buildings. I would like to add Bill Turney. He's, was in manufacturing for about 35 years. He owns the Field Cooking School and Culinary Center at the Field Shopping Center, and his wife Jean has owned Fantasy Land Preschool for the last 10 years. So, I'd like him to be appointed to represent the south end of Main Street. And lastly, I'd like to appoint Steve Nichol to represent the north end. Steve's lived in Morton all his life, he's started two businesses here, currently has a technical publication company, he employs nine people. Could I have a motion to approve? Tom? Randy? Any discussion on these folks? Call the roll, please.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman, oh, sorry. Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Dobbs?
Yes.
On the Appointments for Fire and Police Commission, I worked with Mr. Belsley and Mr. Dobbs, and we decided that we would like to reappoint John Myers and Kevin Roberts. And for the third appointment, I'd like to appoint Tom Siren. He'll be replacing Jerry Houter, who has served for many, many years. Tom, how long did you say he'd been on that board?
He started in July of 1966, so he's been on the Police and Fire Commission for 47 years.
Yeah, I was still in school, and I'm old, so you know. Tom, Tom Siren, many of you know Tom, he was a sergeant in the Army and served in Korea. He joined the Illinois State Police and served with them for 30 years. He was a master sergeant on the State Police and a shift commander, and he also ended his career as, funny way to express that, he was the chief deputy for Bob Houston for about seven and a half years for the county. And I would like to have, have you approve of those three folks. Could I have a motion to do so? Tom?
Second.
Newhouse.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Dobbs?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Ordinance number 1303, this is the second reading of the ordinance to establish competitive bidding procedures. There was a small error in typing on one of them, I hope you've all gotten a revised copy. It was more of a typo than anything else. Before we discuss this, could I have a motion to approve? So much. Randy?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Newhouse. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, the, on this part of it, did we, the difference between the minimum of being $20,000, or did we want it all to be $20,000 as far as the minimum?
The, the minimum was $10,000, except for civil construction. It was our sense, and I talked to Craig Luttermann about this, you can't put very much pipe in the ground for $10,000.
Right.
So, for that kind of a process where you're digging and burying and, what we've chosen to call civil projects, the limit will be moved to 20.
I was kind of looking at it the other way, too, on the other bits, do we want to keep it there, is 10, is 10 okay, or would you want it to be, you know, some further discussion on it?
Don't we have a 20,000 now? Isn't, isn't it has been?
I don't think we have an ordinance now, do we?
State law imposes a $20,000 threshold for bidding of contracts for public works. If you're in excess of 20,000, there's bidding requirement unless you waive that by a supermajority vote of the board. So, you have been operating, as I understand it, under state law, which has for some contracts, public works contracts, 20,000, but that wouldn't cover things like equipment, supplies, and service contracts.
So, the state law doesn't cover that?
Correct. Your, your proposed ordinance is more restrictive than state law, it requires competitive bidding in more instances than what by default state law requires.
So, what have you been operating under, the $20,000 limit?
You've been operating under state law, which is a $20,000 limit for certain contracts. Public works, if Craig's putting a sewer main in the ground, state law says he's got to have that bid. So, 20 has been what you've been operating under generally. Craig?
Yeah, I've been operating under 20, or, you know, that's been my assumption.
So, so where it says service contracts, materials, supplies, that could be 20,000 too, then?
Well, actually, the, that, if you have discretion to set, really the public works side would be, you've matched your public works project to state law, which is 20. So, the figure that's 10 on this draft is purchases of equipment, contracts for supplies, and material, and service contracts. You have the discretion to set that as you see fit, because state law says you don't have to bid those. So, if you want 10, you can do 10, if you want 20, you can do 20, if you want something different, you can do something different.
I guess my question is, is 10 sufficient for what we need to do?
I would point out that Chicago uses 10. I'm not sure they're a good example, but if they can use 10, I think at least to begin with, we can. It seemed to me that since we were starting, we would start with 10, and if that became a little bit too much, we can always adjust it up. Kind of hard to take it back down again.
I just want to make sure that it's the, with the intent on there, with the, with the 10,000. I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with what that's going to mean, because that is going to mean, obviously, extra work for them, you know, sorry, a little more restrictive on the process, which is fine, as long as everybody knows that that was the intent of the, of this.
Well, we, we've been extremely successful with the discretionary limits that we've used, probably substantially benefited the community. I'm not opposed to 10, I just make sure that we, we're, we don't inappropriately restrict ourselves by setting a standard that we didn't formally follow. But I'm, I'm fine with 10 and 20, if, if that is adequate for our needs.
What service contracts would fall, fall under 10?
In my read of it, would be things that would include professional service contracts, engineering contracts, things like that. I haven't, I didn't write the ordinance, but as I read it, that.
Well, there's probably, a lot of times, our engineering is more than 10.
Yeah. It excludes the engineering. It excludes that. There's a section.
Some of the things that would affect, our weed spraying contract is 11,000, I think, I don't know, that's something that's coming up. Those type of extension of projects, we just have to bid them this time. Whereas in the past, we had some of those pumps and the wastewater, those sort of things. We could waive formal bidding if we needed to.
I think paragraph L makes that exemption, allows professional services, or our state's professional services to exempt from bidding requirements, and that's pretty typical in industry for architectural, engineering, consulting to not be required to go out for bid.
But the 20 on civil projects, that's a big one. We do hire a lot of local contractors under that, do some things, so that's, that, you know, we've discussed, it would be a huge benefit to us, without having to do a lot of upfront work, and potentially give it to them anyway, on those type of projects.
It just seems to me 10,000's a little restrictive.
So, Mr. Superintendent, is 10 adequate for, for the needs of the village, in your view, or are there cases where it makes more sense to have that?
I mean, we'll have to operate a little bit different, but, I mean, I guess I would hope in certain cases that we could waive formal bidding if it made sense, that would be my, that's the tough thing with, you know, we're going through with this ordinance for procedures, and we're kind of pushing forward that we want to do more bidding, so, but that's your guys' decision, you know, to bid everything out. Can we operate under that? Yes. We didn't do it necessarily before, we had some things that, there's not a lot of things, but, you know, there are some things that run into that. But if you guys are open to, in some cases, if I present it to the board in that 10 to 20 range, if it makes sense, to waive formal bidding, we've done some of that already with stuff over 20 even, if it makes sense to the village.
But are we going to spend time and money in the 10 to 20,000 range where we didn't spend it before, or time at least, and we have limited employees?
I mean, I think, obviously, to bid stuff out takes time, but. Do it, yeah.
We also have a section in there, though, that would, I think, address those extreme cases. Paragraph M talks about emergency purchases, that in the event, day-to-day operations, unforeseen incident, or something happens, you would use your discretion to award that contract, and then come back to the board and, from a formality standpoint, approve it, but, so it would allow, I think, that discretion, or it does address that, I think. So, I, I guess personally, I, I wouldn't mind, like the merit stated, maybe starting with 10, and if we find out that it really handcuffs the department heads on a day-to-day basis, we can always adjust it, I guess, but.
In any given contract that's signed, too, the trustees have the ability to give the director of public works leeway to expand the contract by X percent for extras and so forth. I, I just think this would give us a chance to, to look at everything, and we'll find out, you know, what's a waste of time and what isn't, and it'll slow us down a little bit.
Sure.
And, and get our arms around this a little bit better.
And trust Craig to come back to us, if it is a problem, let us know, and then we can always adjust accordingly.
I can trust him to come back to if it's a problem.
Yeah, I'll come back.
Any more comments? Call the roll.
Kaufman?
No.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Dobbs?
Yes.
Hare?
No.
Ron would vote on that, because it's a 3 to 2 vote.
This is different, okay. This is a new one. Rainson?
Yes.
Did we have a motion in second?
We did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, we did it before we started.
So, I didn't count, did it pass?
Yes, it passed.
That wasn't counting.
Yes.
All right, the next one, consideration of a reduction in the village's annual contribution to the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is one of those things that starts out small, and if you don't keep an eye on it, it kind of gets away from you. I met with Susan Piles, who's here today, I'm going to call on you in a second, Susan, if that's okay. And Wendy and Ginger and I met and kind of went over the process and why we were spending the money, and proposing today that we reduce that to $20,000. Susan, would you address the group a little bit, give us some history?
I'm Susan Piles, I'm the Director of Tourism for the Village of Morton. One of the. One of the, the reasons that we're looking at this is, our contract that we signed with the PACBB was signed in 2009, and we've really not gone back and, and analyzed how that's been working. With our addition of the Holiday Inn, the amount of money that we have been giving to the PACBB has increased for that period of time. The contract that we have with them right now states that it's renewed just on an annual basis without any discussion, and that it can be altered or terminated by either the PACBB or us with a 60 days notification. And so what we're doing is just looking at the amount of money that we had started with, and also doing that in relationship to some of the other communities who have now gone to the 1% tax to a particular point. And so when we look at the contributions that are being given to, from Pekin and Washington and East Peoria, this would get us in a better line with what they're also contributing.
We were contributing a percentage of hotel motel tax receipts, which was 1%. So when she says that the Holiday Inn, when that came in, that brought in more receipts, which meant we can, we gave more than we had been, you know, it really bumped us up. So I think it is a good thing that we've looked at this and reviewed it.
Yeah, we're not, the old agreement says we give them a certain percentage, and that's how it grew to 60,000. The new agreement's going to say we will give them a certain percentage up to 20,000 dollars, so that won't creep past that.
And it can be, I think we had discussed that the contract that we would have with them would be a year, and so we could revisit that at the end of the, of a year.
Yeah, and, and things have changed, you know, we've got more hotels or motels, and if you look at East Peoria, they've got a couple of very nice hotels coming up, and they've got the new Embassy Suites, and the city of Peoria's got new hotels, so the overflow won't be quite what it was.
Right.
So I think this is appropriate, and I hope that you're okay with it, too.
Is there any debt from the, from a naysayer side of, or from, you know, the, on the other side of this, is there a detriment to us going this route? Is there any negative implications or anything that could happen as far as what we potentially would lose?
The, the things that the Peoria Area Convention Visitors Bureau does for us, I'm sure we would still have, keep that working relationship with them, and we would still be doing that. And we do participate in marketing plans, which is outside of this amount of money, and it's in my budget to continue with that. So we would still be involved in the statewide, well, actually, it's multiple state, summer promotions, fall promotions, we would still be involved in those things, we would still be in the visitors' guide, we'd still be doing those kinds of things.
I'm sorry, state or city?
State, statewide, because...
But not multiple state?
It's multiple states.
Multiple state.
Yes, sir, because when the summer brochure comes out that goes to tell about the things that are happening in the area for the summer and for the fall, those are distributed in Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Okay, all right, I understand what you mean, okay.
Based on your thought process there, is, is the 40,000 we would save could go to other use to continue to promote, you would feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
And have we had any discussion about this reduction with the Convention and Visitors Bureau?
I did, I did have a discussion with them, and that we were going to be discussing this tonight, and they would like to make a presentation to the board, and to let them, so that all of you would be aware of the things that they do and how they feel that their services have served us.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Any more move for approval? A second?
Discussion?
Yeah.
I've had my issues in the past with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and our, and our contributions thereto. At the same time, we are involved, along with other communities, in a fairly substantial effort to ensure that Central Illinois remains economically vigorous. This is a substantial reduction. I guess, I'm not saying I won't, I won't vote to approve, but I wonder if we wouldn't be well-served by a second reading and maybe hearing some other input from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is, it's, it has grown substantially, there isn't any doubt about that, but I, I have a concern about our disengaging economically from the wider community.
I don't know that we're disengaging. Pekin gives 25.
Correct.
We'll give 20, Washington gives 14, 15 this year.
14.
Yeah, so 20,000 is hardly nothing.
Sixty, oh, I agree with that, and 60,000 is substantially beyond what others are paying, so I, I concur with that. I'm just raising the question.
Any follow-up to Steve's observation?
I guess I would just say, I would encourage you to communicate back to them that we're certainly open to have them at any time come and give us an update. I, I think we always welcome any organizations or groups that we have financially supported over the years, and it's our benefit also, as well as theirs, to get an update on just what they are doing with, with our tax dollars, so I would welcome that and encourage it. If at a future meeting, they would come and present.
Anything else? Call a question.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman, oh, sorry. Kaufman.
Yes.
One last item I have is a little disappointing. The paramedics have joined a union, they are now members of the International Association of Firefighters and Associate Firefighters. I'm told the vote was nine to two. It's sad in that we'll now be working with them through their union leaders, but I assure you, they're really top-flight guys and girls, and you can expect no change in the really great services they provide. Village Clerk.
Nothing tonight.
Village Administrator.
Tonight, first of all, I have, I am asking for approval to transfer $12,000 from the general fund and $434,000 from the stormwater depreciation fund to the capital projects fund to pay for some of our infrastructure improvements.
Pro move. Second.
Belsley.
Belsley.
Yes.
Second.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Chief.
I have a couple things tonight, Your Honor. First, would like to seek approval from the board for the purchase of a vehicle. Would be, we would recommend a four-wheel-drive Tahoe on a state bid from Miles Chevrolet. There are actually two state-bid vehicles that we were looking at. One was a Ford Interceptor from Morrell Brothers. It was a little lesser cost. A couple things that we considered in this was the size of the Tahoe. Secondly, the state had a bid that they rescinded, leaving Miles with several vehicles on the lot. We would prospectively be able to get this vehicle next week, where Morrell Brothers were looking at an estimated 14 weeks to be able to get that vehicle, which would mean we could start equipping this vehicle sooner, prepping it for our K-9 units use.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Glad to have a K-9 unit.
Me, too. Also, we need a four-wheel vehicle, too.
We've talked about that in the past.
Yes, we have. Because I happened to see a state police K-9 unit car today. I thought, well, now we'll have our snow vehicle.
Yes.
Call it.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman. Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
One more. Second item.
Yes, one more thing, it wasn't on my itinerary, but I just wanted to remind the board that the Superintendent of Street Department, the Director of Public Works nor the, or the Chief of Police has the authority to close any streets, and that request made by any groups is merely a formality.
When you say merely a formality, do you mean you'll just close any street anybody wants, or?
No, not, we won't do it just because they want to. We research it, but we have that authority to do it, and it doesn't necessarily need to go before the board.
Got it. Corporate counsel.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Fire and Emergency Services.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Public Works.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Wow. Planning and zoning.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village trustees.
Trustee Belsley.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Dobbs.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Hare.
Just one thing I mentioned of the mud run, I don't know, another St. Jude fundraising event that happened in Morton, the, this Saturday was an amazing event that was held out at our park, one of our park facilities, which is, again, just a testament to the past of what this board and the park boards and a lot of the volunteers of this community have done to get an event that had over 600 children from the Central Illinois area raising money for St. Jude, and I think they raised around $35,000. There's a lot of familiar faces out there, my children happened to participate in it, but it was a great, great event, and, and again, just another eye-opening experience about what a great community we live in here.
Neat. Trustee Kaufman.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Newhouse.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Trustee Belsley.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Dobbs.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Hare.
Just one thing I mentioned of the mud run, I don't know, another St. Jude fundraising event that happened in Morton, the, this Saturday was an amazing event that was held out at our park, one of our park facilities, which is, again, just a testament to the past of what this board and the park boards and a lot of the volunteers of this community have done to get an event that had over 600 children from the Central Illinois area raising money for St. Jude, and I think they raised around $35,000. There's a lot of familiar faces out there, my children happened to participate in it, but it was a great, great event, and, and again, just another eye-opening experience about what a great community we live in here.
Neat. Trustee Kaufman.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Newhouse.
Nothing, Your Honor, except that I will have comments when we come back for Resolution 0513, and for the resolution, the approval of Walton Avenue Platte that we pulled from the consent agenda.
We are looking at buying a piece of property to fulfill our obligations to Farm and Fleet. We would like to do that in an executive session. Could I have a motion to go into executive session? Second.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hare.
Hare.
Herman. No, Jase Louise Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Here.
Belsley.
Here.
Dobbs.
Here.
Branson. All night.
I was going to say what again?
We have, I think, two issues, really, we want to get back to the Walton Avenue Platte. I think we can take them together. And the second issue is to reach an agreement with R.A. Cullen and his sons concerning property we need to build a road. Do I have a motion?
I move, Your Honor, approval of the agreement with R.A. Cullen, and with the one modification to note that the 105,000 figure for topsoil is a not-to-exceed number, and with that, also approval of the Platte from E1 consent agenda.
Second.
For clarification, that would be to approve Resolution 2005-13, to approve the agreement with UCM.
That is correct.
Reference Resolution.
Any discussion? Call a roll.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, was this for the Platte, or are they?
Is this for both of them, isn't it?
Both of them.
Should we, I'd like to, can we separate those?
You can vote those separately, or you can do it as an omnibus vote. Technically, for, to do it as an omnibus vote, so both of them, the board has to approve of that, so if any individual member objects, we can separate those into separate action items. So if, to your concern, yes, we can split those.
I would prefer, if we could, split that vote.
Okay, can we get a motion to just do the Platte first?
I will revise the motion to, well, we need the approval to do the, it, it doesn't really make very much a difference, to approve the Platte for Walton Avenue, so move.
I won't adjust my motion.
Okay. Any discussion on the Platte?
Is that what we're doing now?
Yeah, this is just the Platte.
Yeah, but I didn't adjust my motion from the first one.
Oh, you didn't? I thought you said you did.
No, I want to vote on both of them. That was what my second was.
Okay. All right.
So we would need a second on the Platte.
I'll second.
Now we're going to vote just on the Platte.
Okay. Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Then I renew, Your Honor, my motion for the approval of, if I can find it here.
Resolution.
5-13 with UCM for the agreement with, UCM for the acquisition of property and project with the stipulation that the 105,000 dollar figure be, is a not-to-exceed figure.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a roll.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
I'd like to, prior to giving my vote, I guess I'd like to, if this is part of the discussion, I'd like to share my comments or my concerns. I have a lot of concerns, I guess, with the agreement before us tonight that we're asked to vote on. I'll try to go through these one by one and, and express them as best I can, but essentially, the agreement is asking us to, in part, one of the, the requirements of the agreement is to purchase property, and this is, of course, going to allow us to continue expanding and placing the improvements for Cortlandt Street. The purchase of the right-of-way that is a part of this agreement totals, in essence, close to, it's around 2.67 acres that will be required to put the proposed improvements in, and the asking price in the agreement is approximately, going to be 391,822.20, and that comes out to right around $3.36 a square foot. And what I understand is that price was arrived at by merely looking at the recent agreement that we entered into with Farm and Fleet for their property, or what they actually acquired their property for, I should say. So it was referenced, that was a fair market price. I guess my concern with that is, is we're buying right-of-way to put improvements in alongside the front of this property here that is going to be adjacent to the Farm and Fleet property on the south side of Cortlandt Street, and obviously, it's only, only going to increase the value of that property immensely. And typically, over the years, what we've done when we've acquired right-of-way from residents, from businesses, landowners, our practice has been to acquire the right-of-way for a dollar in good faith. We're, we're doing capital projects this year, Greenwood Street, Washington Street. We've done several projects over the last several decades, and that has been a common practice of ours, is to acquire that right-of-way with the, with the understanding that we're greatly improving the property in front of it, that we're adding the improvements, too. So there's a mutual benefit, certainly to the property owner, and certainly to the village of Morton, to acquire that right-of-way in order to carry out the improvements for that project. So a, a practice of ours for decades, literally, has been to acquire the right-of-way as needed from the adjoining property owner and, and virtually have that gifted to the village. And tonight, we're being asked to pay $3.36 a square foot for that property, and, and so I have a, a big problem with that, that one issue right there. Elsewhere in the property, or in the, the agreement, there's also future plans for Walton Street to go south of Cortlandt Street, which will be a road that will be fully improved and placed, or proposed to be placed, between the future Farm and Fleet development and... right now, but the only thing that's for certain is that we agreed to bear the full cost of that as well. I, I, I don't even know where to begin on, on these issues right now. I, I just feel we're, we're, we've had a very good longstanding relationship with this property owner, who's also a contractor and has done work for Morton for many, many I would have hoped that we could come here tonight and have better terms for us to review and consider and to accept. I, I think not only are the portions of this agreement not acceptable to me, but I find it difficult for me, if I were to accept them, to be able to face future, or on future projects, conduct business with other contractors as well. I just, I think we're going down the wrong road here on this, and I would really like to see us actually delay voting on this tonight, and would have an opportunity to sit down with the contractor, the landowner in this case, and try to come to a better understanding of, and I guess, some middle ground with the terms and the obligation that the village is faced with tonight to accepting. And I, with, with that, I, I can't accept the agreement tonight, I can't support it. So my vote is no.
Randy, I think you have a couple of things wrong, discussion. Number one, we no longer get dollar right-of-ways very often from businesses. Mental, for example, in Cortland and Ashland on the corner, where all we did was widen the intersection for semi-traffic, we gave in between $600 to $900 for that easement. That corner easement was 10 by 10, they charged us, and this just happened within the last year and a half. On Detroit Street, mental construction gave us the dollar, we're negotiating with several of the other pieces of property, now, the negotiation's gone so long, now the state takes over. So we're not getting these dollar gifts on North Morton Avenue.
We just got several this year.
Well, yeah, on residential for sidewalks.
So, but they're a landowner, they're a property owner.
Oh, true, but you're talking two and a half acres, and I'm talking commercial property to match what you're talking about. And North Morton Avenue, to widen, widen North Morton Avenue, we, we gave approximately $12,000, they took us to court, and that's what the judge said, was $12,000, and that's what we paid. So we've been paying more than a dollar for these right-of-ways for this commercial ground to do all this construction.
We're, we're in the, in the middle of a vote, could we complete the vote, please?
Well, I think if he has the time to say, then I should have the time to respond.
Did you respond, or are you done?
I'm not done.
All right.
And as far as no bidding contractors, I'm a concrete contractor in town, and if I own two and a half, six acres, I'd want my company to do the work, and I think any concrete company in this town, I could name them off, if they own the two and a half acres, they'd be doing the work. These numbers are fair, Mr. Lautamalk has proved that those numbers were fair. So as far as no bidding, we will have contracts come before this bid, we had one there with the weeds to extend them. It's been a common practice, when we get good people to do good things, we don't go out for bids, we keep who we have at a very competitive price. As far as contractor discussions, I told you before, when Diamond Point failed, Cullen brought a check for $25,000, because our lawyer said we could not force them or the engineering company to improve that road failure, and it was only a year old. Cullen brought a check for $25,000 to the office. So I think they've been fair, I have no trouble with the no bidding, and there is no dollar right-of-ways anymore on most of this right-of-way. We got a few on Detroit, but not even half of them, and that's why, when we did get them, I made a public statement of thanking those companies, because it makes our life so much easier to make these improvements that do improve their property. But I think the newer generation, more our age bracket, aren't enhanced from giving dollar gifts away, and it's too bad, because Morton does get things done. I wish that was a practice, but that is no longer the practice. I responded.
Would you continue?
Dobbs?
I share a lot of the same concerns Randy did, but, does, but as far as this deal was all started, negotiated, you know, prior, and I think at this point, it would be best to go ahead with it, and I'll vote yes.
Herr?
Yeah, I, I just want to be clear, I am voting yes, and it is a fair and good deal for the citizens of Morton. There is a, an agreement that we put into play with Farm and Fleet, we need to adhere to that, from my perspective, despite some other comments tonight, to the contrary of whether the agreement from Cullen is fair to us or not, I believe that the, the amount of the project and what is being asked of us is a fair and reasonable contract, and we need to move forward and complete it, and it will be a good thing for the citizens of Morton. My vote's yes.
All right, send it. All right?
That's the last item for tonight, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Pro move.
Put them both down, Mr.
Okay.
We're adjourned.